The business meeting of the City Council. Vice Mayor Henderson would you lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
I can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undoubted, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the end of it. Thank you very much. I'd remind those in attendance that if you'd like to speak during the public comment period, there's a sign up sheet in the back and ask that you please repeat that when we get to that part of the agenda. First order of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll make.
Is there a sec, need discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the opposed? Motion carries three out. Thank you. Item number three are matters from council members. Is anything that council members would like to share this evening?
Mayor Short, I had one thing I wanted to acknowledge. I got a chance to get to the volunteer recognition dinner on the 4th of December. Greg Hitchens had helped put that together in the tourism bureau. The Trail Angels and the volunteers up at the tourist information center were honored and I think everyone had a nice time and it was a great event and I personally thank them. I had hiked the Appalachian Trail this summer and Waynesboro has a great reputation and the Trail Angels are utilized a lot by folks that want to come down into town and need a break or need something to eat. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they did that.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to acknowledge that we went to the Waynesboro Fire Department Award Bank with this past weekend and the stats they presented with the amount of work that our firemen and rescue personnel do with that fire department is just unreal. So I wanted to thank them for all that they do and the awards they get were well deserving.
I would echo that. That was a really a great, great evening. It really puts into context all of the unsung heroes of our community. So appreciated that. I would just add, we had our council retreat last Friday and I know I enjoyed it and some discussion we've had with some colleagues following it. I thought it was worthwhile and I think there's a little bit of discussion this evening. And then this week we're attending the, number of us are attending legislative breakfast, Stonewall Jackson, meet with legislators. And then lastly, you know, there's always room for improvement and you can't always have, you know, a day where you go 20 degrees to 50 degrees, but I would say I've had a tremendous amount of personal contact today just to make a remark about the diligence and perseverance and hard work of our city staff as it related to the snow cleanup and the storm related activities. Just truly, I mean, really impressive for a community of our size to have the, really the streets cleared in under 24 hours. It's pretty remarkable with the scale of that event. So extend my appreciation for that. Next on the agenda is a presentation of the CAFR by representatives of Didawick and Company. Of the CAFR is the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Randy Huffman and Katie Gerbl from Didawick Company are here with us this evening to present the 2018 CAFR. The CAFR provides detailed information regarding the city's and the school system's financial activities as well as financial position at June 30, 2018. And while it does assess processes and audits processes and can evaluate internal financial practices and control, it is carried out primarily to assess if the city has fairly reported its financial position in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I would say that as you consider the CAFR and Ms. Gerbl and Mr. Huffman will take you through some of the detail, the report is generally good, that your fund balance goes up, your unrestricted fund balance is increased, your unassigned fund balance is increased, you have positive variance. So the financial news is, I think, generally good. I would say that this year, as last year, but I think even more so this year, we were presented with a number of challenges in terms of being able to complete the CAFR primarily, as you're well aware. We're currently, our financial information resides in two software systems. We've been through some change in the management of the finance department and we're still, I think, adjusting business practices to the new finance software. So my hat's off to Didawick and Company and the extra effort and the city staff's extra effort in producing this year's CAFR. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gerbl and Mr. Huffman.
I'd first like to thank, sorry, the finance department and the city manager's office and any other staff at the city that we worked with, the EDA, the Waynesboro Public Schools, for everyone's assistance and cooperativeness in getting this audit completed. I know we ran into difficulties with the software change and also the staff changes, but we were able to work as a team and get this completed by the due date. I'm just going to go through some of the major highlights of this report, obviously not going to go through all 140 pages. You can dive into that as you wish. Starting on page one, we have our independent auditors' report and this report is an unmodified opinion as it has been in the past, which means it is presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and we did not find any issues that caused us to modify our opinion. On page 3A, this is the management discussion and analysis. This is a product of your finance department. We did not prepare this document, but it goes into greater detail than the statements present and provides more information about maybe some budget changes or things for the upcoming year. So if we could move on to the government-wide financial statements, starting on page four, exhibit one, the statement of net position. This statement is presented on the full accrual basis of accounting, so it will include your capital assets, net of depreciation, as well as all the long-term debt of the city, which includes this year, there's a change with the implementation of GAZB-75, so it includes your liability for your OPEB plan. So you'll notice that liabilities increased for that reason. Your liabilities and your assets both increased when compared to fiscal year 17 and that's mainly due to the bond proceeds for the Waynesboro High School project. So your investments went up as well as your long-term debt. Looking at page six, exhibit two, the statement of activities. This presents expenses by function. Has been the case in many years, the largest expense is education and the city contributed $15.8 million to the Waynesboro Public Schools during fiscal year 18. But overall, the net position of the city is a positive change of $3.3 million. Okay, on page seven, we get into the balance sheet for the governmental funds. These funds are presented on the modified accrual basis and will not include your capital assets and long-term debt. These focus on the near-term financing of the city. I want to point out that the unassigned fund balance ended at $9.5 million and this is an increase of $1.3 million from last year. So overall, positive change. On page 10, exhibit five, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Your revenues are pretty much in line with last fiscal year. It was only an increase of $23,000, so that was pretty comparable. Expenditures actually decreased $600,000. And the largest change is due to your other financing sources and that's mainly due to the school debt proceeds. But your overall change in fund balance is a positive $20.8 million, which 20 of that is the bond proceeds. On page 12, we have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the general fund. This is your budget to actual comparison. You will see that there are favorable variances in all of the columns. Revenues, $45,000 favorable variance, but expenditures were 1.6 million less than budgeted. So even though you had originally budgeted for a $1.8 million use of fund balance, you didn't have to use that and you had an overall increase of fund balance. On page 13, we get into the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. These are the business type activities of the city. Total assets actually decreased $2 million and that's mainly due to your current year depreciation exceeding your amount of current year additions. And your total liabilities decreased $2.9 million and that's basically just current year debt curtailment. Page 15, statement of revenue, expenses, and changes in fund net position for the proprietary funds. This is overall very comparable to the prior fiscal year with an increase of $500,000 in charges for services and that's just due to increases in charges for the waters and the sewer fund. Skipping over to page 18, the statement of fiduciary net position. These are agency funds that the city has fiscal responsibility for. These are not assets of the city. Starting on page 19, we get into the notes of the financial statements. These are just going to provide greater detail for the statements that I've already explained. The only ones I want to point out are important, note seven is your capital asset breakdown, note nine is your long-term debt, and then note 22 is new for this year and that explains the change in accounting principle and that is due to the GAZB-75 change that I explained with the OPEB requirements. On pages 70 to 74, those charts go along with the OPEB and GAZB-75 changes. It breaks down the liability between your net position and what's been funded and what hasn't been funded for your VRS and OPEB plans. I'm not going to go into detail with the other statements after that. It's more supplementary information and breaking down the previous statements in more detail. So I will let Randy take over for the compliance section.
I'd like to direct your attention to pages 130 and 131 in the CAFR in the back of the compliance section. This is your report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters in accordance with the government auditing standards. This report has two repeat findings from the previous year and two new findings that we will discuss in a moment. On pages 132 to 133 is the report on compliance for each major program and internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance, which used to be the OMB circular A133. This report expressed an unmodified opinion. On pages 134 to 136 is the schedule of findings and question costs. The major programs for 2018 that we tested under the Uniform Guidance was Title I, Community Development Block Grant, Adult Education, and Adoption Assistance. Type A programs are programs that expend more than $750,000 of federal monies in the current fiscal year. Finding 081 is a repeat finding and this is due to the fact that we as your auditors prepare your financial statements except for the MDNA that Katie mentioned earlier. Finding 17-1 was also a repeat comment. This related to your cash disbursements, but this was corrected during the fiscal year Finding 18-1 was related to your cash and tax reconciliations that were not performed in a timely manner. And finding 18-2 was related to the inventory evaluations in the new system. Both of these findings appear to be related to the implementation of the new software combined with the staff turnover at the city. On pages 137 to 139 is the schedule of expenditure of federal awards. This lists all your federal money that you received and expended and breaks it out by Dustin had a prior engagement tonight and apologize for not being here, but we'd like to again thank the city for their cooperation. Their staff has always been helpful in getting us records or whatever we needed to perform our duties as auditors. And we also like to thank you for inviting us to present the CAFR to the city council this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Any member of council have any questions? All right. Thank you all for your time and safe travels.
You too.
Okay, that item does not require any action this evening, but item five is next up to receive a presentation from Mr. Greg Hitchens, Director of Economic Development on the Economic Development Strategic Plan and Related Initiatives. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Short, members of council, Mr. Hitchens will give an overview of what is currently the strategic plan and associated goals and objectives of the program as well as some of the existing key programmatic features of the department's work. Ultimately, we'll seek alignment or try to assess alignment with council's vision and objectives for the community. For our newly seeded members of council, Dr. Ostetter, Mr. Henderson, this will be largely an introduction. We hope you find it informative. Greg will cover the highlights, but I think the content of the presentation demonstrates sort of the breadth and innovation that the department brings to economic development and tourism initiatives for the community. And for Mr. Short, this will be, to a certain extent, refresher material. And so no action is requested this evening, but in the, again, we're seeking confirmation or alignment and so based on feedback we might receive tonight or subsequent to tonight's meeting, we'll consider next steps on how to move forward. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Hitchens.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for this opportunity tonight. I just wanted to review everything that we do in our office. The overarching goal, the overarching mission and vision each day that we come to work is building community prosperity. Prosperity means different things to different people. For some, it might mean a good job, payment above what we currently have as an average wage. It might mean great shopping. It might mean good parks, a greenway system, whatever it might mean that we're trying to work towards that goal of building community prosperity. And for us, that means increase the city revenue in some way, some fashion, whether it's increase in business investment, whether it's an increase in visitors, hotel stays, meals taxed, et cetera. So that is our goal each and every day. I'd like to begin with just a couple of footnotes or general statements about what we'll be reviewing tonight. I titled it Refresh, excuse me, Refresh to Recharge. As Mr. Hamp pointed out, we've been through a strategic plan process. We're going to talk a little bit about how we got to where we are today. We will refresh or review some of the key elements that make up the backbone or the reason we have some of our strategic initiatives and will recharge that will go forward with some new direction. Our time tonight, we could easily spend hours going through all the details that are behind what I'm going to talk about tonight, but we're going to limit it to a few minutes, 15 to 20 minutes. So everything I talk about tonight will be very general, be high, high level, general. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have as we go along. So please feel free to raise your hand and ask that question. Tourism and economic development are similar but different. Tourism is business to consumer, economic development, business to business. Sometimes those lines cross, sometimes they're vastly different. So I'll try to note those differences as they go through tonight, but in general, we're marketing outside of the community to bring revenue inside the community. It's a team sport. Not only is it a team sport within the city, so we work closely with planning parks, public works, all the other agencies in town to help make what we do successful for the citizens and visitors, but it's also a team sport outside of our community. I was at a statewide event last week, beginning with the Secretary of Commerce and Trade to speakers down, three of them mentioned economic development is a team sport and we need to participate as a team at all levels. That's why we, as a general principle, maintain, try to maintain leadership roles in every organization that we belong to. We don't want to belong to an organization just to belong to it. We want to be part of it to set the course, set policy, learn best practices, and really invoke the spirit of collaboration and cooperation in everything that we do. Tonight, I'm going to show you a few pages from websites. What I'm showing you tonight are static pages of interactive websites. We have a great IT department and I'm sure they could have made all this work, but just to save time and effort on their part, I'm going to show you static pages. I'm going to try to remind you that they're static pages as they go along, so just be aware of that. And finally, by definition, strategic initiatives are discretionary programs and projects outside the normal day-to-day operation of a department. So I'm not going to talk about what we do on a day-to-day basis. I'm going to look forward and really talk and focus in on what some of these strategic initiatives are. So to refresh, 2010, we started the process of building a strategic plan from scratch. We invited a consultant to come in to help us. We gathered community input and data. We created a task force that included members of city council and the EDA and the public. We produced a five-year strategic plan that was adopted by your peers in 2012 and also by the EDA. As we began to reach the five-year anniversary of that, we invited another consultant to come in for just a day. They ran three focus groups without staff in the room gathering input from our stakeholders as to how they thought that strategic plan was functioning. Did we meet our goals? Did we not meet our goals? Where do we fall short, et cetera? We took that data as a staff and developed seven key goals, which were affirmed by the city council and the EDA in 2017. You may remember also in 2017 was our comprehensive plan project. We decided that staff was probably not a really good idea to try to develop two long-term plans at the same time. So we set aside the economic development strategic plan process for that period of time while the comp plan was being done. We've now picked this back up again and hope to by the end of the fiscal year have an updated strategic plan for the next five years. So recharge, these are the seven goals and while it would be fun for me to stand up here and read all seven goals to you and go through each one line by line and outline the strategy and the tactics behind each one, I'm not going to. I'll make sure you have a printed copy of this, but instead, we've kind of collected and summarized these seven goals into three main focus areas. Messaging, actions, and preparation. And we're going to remember that by the words that that spells is MAP. So we're mapping our future through these strategic initiatives. And I'm going to start with preparation. So tonight, we're going to talk about zones and in this case, by definition, it's a predetermined geographical effort, geographical area that produces economic benefit to someone for development in that area. Talk about business-ready sites. This is a statewide initiative to be more prepared for new business investment and just in general, talk about our climate for growth, our business climate for growth in business and in visitor experience. We have four zones that we work with. The first one is an opportunity zone. This is relatively new. It's a federal program. It's by Census Trac that was nominated by the governor of Virginia to the U.S. Treasury Department. They accepted all the nominations from the governor, so there were 212 opportunity zones in Virginia and close to 9,000 opportunity zones in the United States. As you see on the map here, that's the one Census Trac in the city of Waynesboro and a neighboring Augusta County Census Trac. It's a 10-year program that provides deferment or reduction of capital gains taxes for investors. So the short version of this, if you have a capital gains from a sale of a previous investment, you don't want to pay capital gains tax on that, you can invest it in an opportunity fund and that opportunity fund invests that into an opportunity zone. The longer you keep that money in that opportunity fund, the less ultimate federal capital gains tax you pay, all the way to zero if you keep it in there long enough. The IRS has just introduced its rules and regulations for public comment till the end of the year. Once that happens, this will become finalized and we'll be able to start promoting that we have this opportunity zone. Second is a hub zone. This is also a federal program, also Census Trax. Three of our five Census Trax fall into this category, except one is scheduled to be uncertified in 2021. The main benefit of this is if you are a company that meet a bunch of requirements that are located in a hub zone, have your employees live in a hub zone, not necessarily the same hub zone, but a hub zone, you can check a box on federal contracts and get, kind of move up the ladder to get federal contracts. Lot of rules behind this, but it's still out there and it's still available. State program is enterprise zone. We have three of those. Apologize, that's a little hard to see on the screen, but a downtown, up east Main Street is one and our two industrial parks, or two and three. east Main Street is one, and our two industrial parks, or two and three. There are two statewide benefits for locating a business here. One is job creation. Again, a bunch of fine print behind all this, but if you create jobs, you get a cash rebate every year for up to five years. That's $500 per job for one level, $800 per job for a second level. Second is capital improvement. Again, multiple levels. You could, could receive up to $200,000 as a cash grant back for capital improvement. We have local grants, local incentives tied to the enterprise zone, primarily for the subzone, which is a portion of our downtown zone. That's facade grant, landscaping, landscaping grant, tax abatement program for old historic buildings, and we also have a modest job creation program, job creation grant as part of this as well. And lastly, our local zone, tourism development zone, was created three years ago by city council. We also have three zones in this area. One is the downtown area, one is the east Main Street area, and one is the exit 94 area. We are targeting very specific industries based on NAICS codes, North American Industry Classification Code. So for example, if you wanted to build a hotel in the downtown area, that would qualify. If you want to build a hotel in the exit 94 area, that would not qualify. So we're looking for very specific types of tourist-related industries in each of the three zones. We run marketing co-op programs based on, and also based on project size. Individual businesses could get tax reimbursement, tax advantages as part of their incentive program, all based on their capital investment into a program. I'm going to cover incentives in detail a little bit later. There's a statewide program for gap financing. These are for big projects I mentioned, like hotels, convention centers, that sort of thing, where a business could qualify for state gap financing, which is essentially is their 1% of their sales tax goes towards financing that project, and it gets paid back over time. Business-ready sites, again, this is a statewide program to get more sites ready. State has adopted a five-tier system, and all greenfield sites eventually will be, have a tier ranking associated with them. As you can see, it goes from zero to go, wow, this would be a great industrial site, with nothing on it, to a tier five, which is pad-ready, ready-to-construct, permits approved, companies ready to come in and start moving dirt. We're going to hit what our industrial parks are in a second. Why this is important, in today's economy, businesses are ready to build immediately. They want all, all the risk taken out of the equation upfront. They want to move in, identify site, put that shovel in the ground, and be up and running in 18 months or so. It's important, as you can see from the yellow tiered in the bottom, that we have as many sites as possible in a tier four or five, if we even want to be in the game. Over the past couple of years, we've responded to a number of projects and leads looking for buildings and/or sites. We never made it to the shortlist because we didn't have the right kind of building or the right kind of site for that particular project. We've talked about Nature's Crossing Technology Center, the exit 96 industrial park, the legacy Waynesboro Commons and Industrial Park, which is behind Target. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Southern Corridor Road that connects those two, that was approved and designed to alleviate traffic not only at the town center, but become the main artery through Nature's Crossing Technology Center. That's 170 acres that we're about halfway through, getting it ready to go. It's currently a tier-two veering on tier-three status. What you see here is one possible configuration. We have five different possible configurations. They all add up to roughly 1.2 million square feet of industrial space when it's all done, and a minimum of two rail-served sites. The legacy park, so behind Chantel, behind Berry Plastics, adjacent to Interstate 64. We still have about 20 acres of available land, developable land there, where we can fit roughly 200,000 square feet of industrial space. Once the Southern Corridor Road is completed, we will still need to build a short-access road, but the Southern Corridor Road is crossing the creek and doing the difficult part of that construction, so our little road will be relatively inexpensive to gain access to that 20 acres that we can develop further. So our key initiatives for preparing is working with our existing sites, working with private landowners, working with private developers to make their property ready for investment, and also to enhance our business climate and our quality of life factors to further enhance business development and further enhance visitor, visitor, visitors coming. On the action side, and today, and I mentioned those projects that we responded to, it's either workforce or real estate, or the first two things that people ask. Usually, by the time it gets to us, they've already figured out that we have a workforce that's available or could be available for their work, so we need to be ready to market and be able to show them what workforce we have. This is one of those interactive pages that lives on our website as well as the state website, where we list all of the properties that we are aware of. It's, again, an interactive site. We have four different levels of types of buildings, as well as greenfield sites. It's searchable. You get a printed report. You can add photos, videos, data, et cetera, all behind it. It does spin out demographic information that's centered around that site, so a prospect can look at this and see what the workforce is, what the population is, what the income is for 30-minute drive time, 45-minute drive time, and 60-minute drive time from the center of that site. Anything that we put on that site is also on the state website, and that's just an example of what a printed report might look like. If someone gains access to one of our sites on the state website, it actually prints out with the VEDP, Virginia Economic Development Partnership contact on it, so we know exactly who's looking for that information. If someone gains access through our site, it comes out with my name on it, so they have to call me for more information, so we can follow up. We're not just disputing, not just putting out real estate information, and we're finding out who those contacts are. Target Industries are really important for us to focus on. Target Industry matches our competitiveness, matches our strengths, helps us to be more diverse economy, and, and solidify what we already have. We also don't want to be out there in left field. We want to match up what our other partners are doing. So the state has eight, I'm sorry, seven main target industries. Go Virginia, that we do a lot of work with, has four of the same main industries. The Shenandoah Valley Partnership also has five main industries plus a new one. So our target industries match up with what our partners are doing. So food and profit, food and beverage processing, manufacturing of all sorts, information technology, which could include data centers, cybersecurity, that sort of thing, and transportation and warehousing. I mentioned incentives. There are three basic types of incentives: statutory, the only statutory incentive that we have is tied to the tourism development zone. And again, that's based on project-driven capital investment, hiring people, paying them certain wages, the possibility for reimbursement of tax fee, city taxes and fees exists. We have program incentives, which is statutory at the state level, but we have competed to be part of that program. And again, that is state grants for capital investment, job creation grants, and local incentives, facade grants, landscaping grants, tax abatement, again, mostly for historic buildings, and job creation. Just as an aside, since 2006, 24 companies have cashed $1.8 million worth of checks from the Commonwealth for this program, and through the facade and landscaping program, we've distributed $184,000, not counting the Community Development Block Grant facade program. The discretionary side, which is all performance-based, our stance is we generally do not give out cash unless it is part of a state matching program, which we have some say in that. Everything else we do is on a return on investment model. It must be competitive. In other words, they're going to move to North Carolina, or they're going to stay here, so that makes it a competitive situation. We look at capital investment, whether it's real estate, the building, the property itself, job quantity, as well as qualities. What's their average wage compared to the average wage for that industry for the city of Waynesboro? Everything we do is a post-performance reimbursement, except for, again, mention those cash opportunities with the state. So we have very little pre-performance. Most everything we do is post-performance. So engage our local real estate community to create an accurate database of available buildings and sites. Most of them are pretty good. We had a meeting a few weeks ago. We invited all the local real estate brokers in. About 13 of them came in for a couple of hours. We reviewed some of the same information and some new information, explained to them the importance of providing their information to us, because we just do not have time to go out and ask. And I relayed a most, the most recent project that we're working on. We received a request from Information on the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving holiday at noon. They want information by the Monday after Thanksgiving holiday at noon. So you subtract two holidays, two weekends. Basically, we had 24 hours to fill out an RFI and get information to them, which we did, but it, we didn't have time to go out and say, hey, does anybody have a building that matches these specifications? We could only apply for the building that we knew, we knew about. Also, by the end of fiscal '20, so the next, next fiscal year, we need to start promoting our new industrial park. So we'll be promoting, we'll be presenting it in our budget process, a plan to start promoting that industrial park that'll go from fiscal year 2020 all the way to fiscal 2024, after the industrial park is up and running. And finally, messaging. Economic development operates four websites, plus the tourism website, and we rely heavily on the city's government website for information. The WaynesboroBusiness.com is the primary website. It's in the process of being totally redone. That's what you see there is the homepage of the new site. It's taken our vendor a lot longer to migrate our data than we had anticipated, but we do hope that'll be live by the end of the year, first part of the week, first part of the year. Nature's Crossing is, is live at the moment. It is totally focused on Nature's Crossing Technology Center. Pictures, all the engineering reports, et cetera, is all in there. That's in beta testing, but it is still, it's live. Grow Waynesboro is our economic development entrepreneur site, and Waynesboro Startup is just that, how to start a business in Waynesboro, step by step. The Visit Waynesboro Tourism website is also in the process of being redone, and that new website should be launched mid-January, mid-February. Here's another one of those interactive pages that I'm showing, static pages of. This is new information on our website. It is, again, interactive, complete, up-to-date demographic information for Waynesboro, the MSA, and the state, so you can compare all those things. As you can see here, it talks about population, education, number of degrees, number of college degrees by degree, households, housing, all kinds of interactive information. It mouse over each line. It gives you information about each line, and, again, just some of the other things. It compares year to year, and so forth. So we're looking forward to getting that up and running. Two other interactive pages that'll be on the new site as well. This is small business research. Let's say you want to start a hair, hair salon. You can type that information in. This happens to be a heat map of where other hair salons are in the Waynesboro area. So you can zoom right down to the street address. Those heat maps will go into dots as opposed to blobs, and you can find out exactly where hair salons are. Keeping in that same vein, you want to find out where your target market is. You can move the slider bar to the left. You want to be a high-end salon. You want to be a low-end salon. You want to target senior citizens. You want to target millennials, whatever. You can adjust all of that, and that map will change, showing you where that target audience is. And finally, it will give you information to complete your financials. So based on the size of your salon, you're going to have two chairs. You're going to gross this money, dollars per year. These are the kind of costs you can, you can anticipate as a percentage of your overall costs. So lastly, we want to expand the content and audience while maintaining continuity across all platforms. So we're dealing with five websites, five social media outlets. It really should be 10 social media outlets. We just don't have the manpower to make that happen yet. And how do we manage all that content? And how do we manage it from a visitor standpoint and a economic development standpoint? So the messages can be the same, but it's got to be different. So it's quite a task to maintain all that together. And using technology for the visitor experience, so our new website will have an opportunity to book hotel rooms directly from our website. It will also link directly to social media channels where someone can post a picture on their social media channel. It'll get uploaded, if they do it right, to our site, and we'll have live interaction with visitors here, posting pictures about their experience here, as well as the two examples I showed you for economic development. So there you have it. Sorry, a little longer than 20 minutes, but those are our key strategic initiatives for the next 18 months. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I did neglect one thing. If anyone would like to take a tour on a warm, dry day, I'd be happy to take a tour of Nature's Crossing Technology Center and go back in, and you can see what it's all about.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Any questions?
The interactive website, when will that be live?
I'm hoping by the end of the year, first part of January.
And have we got any, any good feedback on our industrial park, any interest?
We have no interest because it's not ready, but the people that we show it to are super excited about it. Again, without going into a whole litany of details, it's the access, the location, the access, the rail serve, the programs behind it. When we did our initial market research, this will be a couple of years ago, at this point, there were three rail-serve sites in the mid-Atlantic region that met that criteria. So the 40-acre, the midsize, is a kind of a sweet spot. Someone that has a 100-acre rail site is not going to break it into smaller pieces because they want a 100-acre rail site. So we've got a pretty good, we will have a very good product when the infrastructure's in place.
Any questions? One question I have for you is, Hitchens, is, I think, as I recall, the last couple of budgets, you've requested an additional staff member, and we haven't been able to do that. So the question that I have is, in the same way that when, if, if we know that there are, there are more crimes to be solved in the city, we need to provide additional resources to the police department. If, and if we were to, I think it was an organization, sort of consider, are we, I would be interested, maybe this might be part of a work session conversation or otherwise, to understand what, what does an investment, a city like our, our size, look like such that if we started going gangbusters and we had just a contact, your inbox is filling up with folks, we certainly, I would imagine, suspect that we don't have those sort of resources to, to handle that at this point. And so, in the same way that with the additional resources we've provided, and maybe this isn't a great analogy, I don't know, this is one I came up with, but in the same way that the additional resources that we've provided over, to, to the police department over the last couple of years, wow. I mean, you, you can see, you can see the, the sort of turn of events. So my, my question, and maybe more statement, rather, is I would, I would be, and I'd be curious to find out, what resources have we been applying? Are they adequate? And so, I'll leave that as more of a statement. The, the one question I did have was, speaking to one of the target industries and target businesses that you were, that you'd mentioned, you'd said, we don't, and I'm paraphrasing here, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to go deviate too far away from what our neighbors are doing relative to, to labor market and, and skill. But, but that said, I mean, I, I would, again, be curious to have a conversation about, is that really the best strategy? I mean, in that, I don't know how we compete with 60 cent, you know, on, on the dollar rates for large industrial sites out in Stewart's draft. And so, and that just might be me. But I would be curious about, what is our new economy look like? What are the investments that we need to make that, that maybe go beyond this sort of very nostalgic industrial mindset, and, and how other communities across the country, maybe just more specifically in Virginia, are sort of adapting their strategy? So I would be, I would be curious about that.
If I said neighbors, I apologize, because I'm not, don't think we should mirror what Augusta County does or anybody else. We need to be vertically integrated with the people above us in the bigger regions, so we shouldn't so we shouldn't be out, if they're targeting manufacturing of widgets, we shouldn't be out looking for manufacturing of non-widgets. So we need to take advantage of the marketing horsepower that the state at the regional level, for us to kind of follow in behind, not be out on our own, because we don't have the resources, and probably never will have the resources, to be doing something totally different than being vertically in line with what our statewide partners are doing.
And maybe I'm just, I like things, you know, more immediate, more immediate, and I know that life doesn't work that way, but, but also just trying to understand all those relationships, and I can certainly appreciate regionalism and statewide partnerships, but I, I'm really curious about how that has benefited our city and the path forward, not to suggest that we should, should, should remove ourselves, but I, you know, if we keep on attending all the meetings and we don't, we don't, we don't get the back scratched, then I think it starts calling into question of like, well, are we just a participant or are we a beneficiary? And I think it's important that we pivot as a community to be a beneficiary. We've, we've got a lot of work to do, and we, so I certainly appreciate your effort, and you've got a great staff down there with Courtney and Stephanie and the like, and just, but we need to, if folks don't want their taxes to go up, I mean, cost of services are going to continue to go up, you know, salaries and, and, and health insurance and alike, and so either, either we go to the taxpayer, the pays real estate taxes, or we try to diversify our, our, our economy, and so this is, this is an absolutely critical thing that I think we, I would encourage all my colleagues, I know we've talked offline about it too, but to be absolutely laser-focused on here in the coming months, so.
I think I can answer one of those questions for you, out of the approximate 50 leads that we received over the last 18 months, 39 of them have come from the partnership, and the majority of those have come from the state.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir, that was very informative.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to item number six is the presentation of the FYE 2019 First Quarter Financial Report. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have prepared the first quarter financial report for the general fund and the enterprise fund, that is water, sewer, refuse, and stormwater funds, for the period ending September 30th. If I would just call your attention to some of the detail of the quarterly report, you will note that there are the expenditure and revenue departments or categories, a listing, and then the revised budget, which is the budget that council adopts with the FYE 19 appropriation ordinance, plus any encumbrances that rolled from the previous fiscal year, and then any additional appropriations of council that are made during the fiscal year. You'll see actual revenues or expenditures, and then the remaining available budget, and then the current year-to-date actual percentage of the budget. And as you look down through the general fund expense categories, I might just point out a few things, I hope that most of the expenditure categories are fairly intuitive, or their titles are fairly intuitive. Correction and detention, number 33, is the Middle River Regional Jail and the Shenandoah Valley Junior Detention Center contributions. The number 42, sanitation, waste removal, is actually the local landfill post-closure activities that occur at the former landfill off of Winchester Avenue. Welfare and Social Services, number 53, is actually a contribution to the Valley Community Services Board, and then DSS, that is Virginia Public Assistance, and the Comprehensive Services Act contributions are in transfers, as are the school appropriation. That while, as you look down through the percentage of expenditure, you would see that most of the expenditures are somewhere around 25%, some below 25%. A couple that, things to consider though, is one, that a lot of the expenditures will not necessarily track exactly with the fiscal year, because you have large capital expenditures that are made periodically, the contributions that we make to, some of the outside agencies are made either twice a year, the larger ones are allocated monthly, so they do track pretty well. And then in the enterprises, the inter-fund transfers that are for the overhead contributions that the general fund makes to the enterprises, that transfer is made at the first of the fiscal year, so in other words, transfers for the services like the financial services, treasurer's services, the human resource services, those kinds of overhead costs are transferred at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then as well, similar information relative to general fund revenues, again, you shouldn't expect that that information would track precisely at 25% per quarter, because some of the real estate taxes, for instance, personal property taxes are either annual or semi-annual payments, stormwater fees are collected semi-annually, and as you look at stormwater revenue, it's only at about 2% in the report, but the first billing of stormwater fees just went out at the end of November as well. Some of the revenues that are reported, actually, sales is a good example, where sales tax is sent to us from the Commonwealth, and it generally, that contribution lags about two months behind, so we don't see the first full quarter of sales tax until December, and, and in that regard, I've looked at sales tax, which is a, has, you know, is a significant revenue for the city, and it's candidly a little soft, nothing necessarily to alarm and something that can be quickly made up. Nonetheless, quarterly reporting, especially for the seasoned users, can alert management and council to general trends or looming problems. As I looked through the quarterly report, of course, I, you know, have perhaps a fair amount of experience with the city's budget, I didn't see things that alarmed me and anything that was a little bit off. I'm able to go into the detail and review in the budget at a more granular level, and then as well, I would say that the department heads here at the city do quite a good job, I think, of monitoring their budgets, both, you know, in terms of their expenditures and their relevant revenues. I'm glad to answer any questions that the council might have about the quarterly report, and I'll be curious to know, as you, as you consider it over time, any additional information you might like to have.
We brought our attention to sales tax, but I'm trying to find which category, what number that's under.
Sales tax would be in the revenues, other local taxes, number 12. That in other local taxes, the big numbers there are sales and meals, and then to a lesser extent, lodging.
Any other questions, Mr. Shaw? Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item 7A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the state seizure fund restricted fund balance in the amount of $6,000 to transfer to the general fund to purchase replacement fitness equipment at the Waynesboro Police Department. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Short, members of council, the state seizure, I think, is, refers to our drug seizure assets, these are funds or assets that come into ownership of the city through drug interdiction. The chief recommends purchase of some additional or new exercise fitness equipment for the police department's workout area. The piece that is being replaced was, came to us originally in 2002 when we did the renovations there, and we contemplate donating this to a local agency, so it will return to beneficial use, but again, these are funds that are not local tax funds, and appreciate the chief's judicious use of those opportunities.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Ordinance is introduced this evening, we'll follow up at our following meeting. Item 7B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Project Hope Grant in the amount of $25,000 to the school funds for salaries, materials, and transportation costs. Mr. Hamp?
Again, these are grant funds for the school fund.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 7C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Title III Immigrant Children and Youth Grant in the amount of $43,073 to the school funds for materials and supplies. Mr. Hamp?
I think that's, the title is self-explanatory.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Item 7D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating the Title III No Child Left Behind Grant in the amount of $48 to the school funds to be used to purchase materials and supplies.
Self-explanatory.
Okay, are there any questions? Spend it all in one place, is there a motion to introduce?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Item 7E is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a tiered system of supports, VTSS, PBIS, state grant, in the amount of $31,918 to the school funds to be used to support stipends and staff development. Mr. Hamp?
Self-explanatory.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight is to consider adopting a resolution canceling city council meeting from Monday, December the 24th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any discussion? One item of conversation that we've had was, you know, when you consider the number of storm events that we've had, and that you're essentially sandwiching a, a, what would normally be considered, at least from our neighboring jurisdictions in Stanton, Augusta, and so on, are providing an additional paid holiday for their employees, I think we've had some little one-on-one conversations about extending that to our hard-working staff as well, and, you know, at our retreat, I would sort of reflect on, our first exercise was what sort of our number one priority into the upcoming budget and for this council to achieve, and all of us put our employees at the top, so I think this is certainly a good gesture, and.
Agreed.
So with that, is there, would you accept that friendly amendment? That's his turn, second?
Yep.
Okay, with that, any further discussion? Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, 3-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Next is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
I don't have anything this evening, and no one has signed up under the citizen comment period either.
Okay, great. Anything else for the good of the order? No, again, well, happy holidays and merry Christmas to everyone, and appreciate and look forward to continuing with good work in the coming, coming year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Great, adjourn, thank you.